Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 4, 2018. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gascoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda, and I'm still not clear, are we going to make a modification to the agenda? Yes. Can somebody make a suggestion or how you want to do that?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, consent agenda item regarding the 2019 license renewals. The license renewal for PAPs should be contingent on compliance with all city codes.
Okay. So does that effectively modify the consent agenda?
Actually, it would be if that is the same requirement for all, so you could do it for all of them. They should all be in compliance when we renew.
That's a great rule.
Thank you.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by, what was it, you, Demmer, to adopt the agenda as, with the change in the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Item one, I'm sorry, if you can't hear this noise up here, there's this really weird noise going on like a chair or a stomach growling or something. Yeah, that's it. First item on our agenda is to meet the rescuers, cardiac arrest save, and I think we're turning this over to Chief John Piper.
Mayor, councilmember. Thank you for letting me say a few words. In a life-threatening medical emergency, seconds count. To give a person a chance at a reasonable shot at a normal life, things happen quickly. A team really needs to be formed to get everything going in the right direction. We had such a case on August 28 of this year where one of our residents suffered a cardiac arrest, and the system starts with an early 911 call. His wife immediately called 911. With that, that call goes to our central communications up in Anoka. Three dispatchers up there were involved. They immediately got three police officers and five firefighters going to the scene. Alina got a couple of paramedics in their medic rig and a supervisor going, but all in all, there's about 15 people prior to getting the victim to the hospital that were involved to make all this happen. And I'm really excited to tell you that the individual involved made a full recovery, and I am even more excited to tell you that I am done speaking, and now Eric, Lindbeck, his wife Jess, and kids Andrea and Evan want to come up here and say a few words.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I wrote down what I wanted to say tonight because I figured I wouldn't get through this otherwise. As I sat and tried to come up with something that really had a few thoughts. First of all, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We cannot thank you enough. You were all amazing on that day. One thing that keeps coming back to me is when Officer Brown first arrived on the scene. He came to help me move Eric to the floor. He didn't ask questions. He didn't ask me to step aside. He just let me tell him what needed to happen, and he helped me do that. That was the last thing I did. I knew better than to be in the way. I myself had been in emergency situations. I've worked in the operating room for about a decade. I knew that the best thing for Eric was for me to let them do their jobs, and I should do mine, take care of my kids. That was the next thing on my list. I called neighbors, friends, and family to help take care of us. I think of you guys more than you will ever know, and I don't even know your names or faces for the most of you. That evening's kind of a blur. I do recall the calm of the storm. The respect you have for me and my children. You were all very quiet, made it look so easy. You communicated so well together and worked as a great team, and I appreciate that. I think about your jobs and the jobs of the nurses and the care team and everybody involved to serve and protect. You get a phone call, you're told where to go. You don't know if the person, what you're going to find when you get there, but you go. You don't know if they're a good man, you don't know if they're a Republican, a Democrat, what religious beliefs they have, or what he does for a living, but in that moment, none of it mattered. All you knew is that he needed your help, and you had the skills to help him. I think about what if we did that more in our own personal lives, and what if we walked into a room and we were just kind and helpful and didn't judge people? You made me think about how lucky I am, not only that we still have Eric with us today, praise be to God many years to come, but I now get to raise my kids and say to them, be kind. Be like those men and women who walked into our home on August 28, 2018, and all they did was help. Be a helper, be a hero. You are certainly our heroes. I hope on a bad day after a bad call, a bad case, or just a bad day at home, we all have them, I hope that you can look back on the call that you got on August 28, 2018, and know that you did good. You did your job, and it made a difference, and it will continue to make a difference for years to come. Thank you again. We are blessed because of you, and we could not be more appreciative.
A lot of that's covered by my wife. I'm just, feel blessed to, you know, still be a dad, still be a husband because of your health. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I say?
Thank you for helping my dad survive a cardiac arrest.
Wow. I think, I've sat behind this desk for about seven years, and that was one of the nicest things I've ever heard and one of the most proudest moments, because we know how fortunate we are to have the police and the fire and the EMTs and everybody we have here. We're so thankful for them, but you lived, you lived it, and that's, thank you so much for those words. And we're, thank you, all of you, but go ahead, Chief Piper.
Mayor, councilmembers, you heard what I said before about the team effort, and of course, I don't need to describe that again. When we're done with our services, then that patient goes to Mercy Hospital, so then the nurses and doctors become a big part of the team. And to put this all in the perspective, Dr. Stevens is the associate medical director for Alina, and he's going to put the whole thing in perspective for us.
Excellent.
Chief, thank you for the invitation. Both chiefs, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you that what a heartfelt and what a great time of year to be able to celebrate something as special as this. You hear this team approach over and over again, and when I walk in the door, I see the commitment that Coon Rapids has made with the HeartSafe communities, and there's a big sign right on the door that says AED inside. And as you hear, this starts with the phone call with the communication specialists, the first responders, with the police officers, fire department, with the paramedics, and with the beautiful hospital that we have in this community. And you put this combination together with early being able to defibrillate with these AEDs that we've put in our communities and in our first response vehicles, having the ability to get chest compression started very early, and some of the most up-to-date evidence-based protocols and training that this is our most devastating call and our most critical call on the medical side of EMS, and this is what we all train for every day. I think what's hard for a lot of people is we have the perspective on how bad this can be and how nice it is to have outcomes like this, and there's research that's done on this, and thanks to movies and TVs, you know, if you ask people without medical training in the room what they think the survivability is if someone needs CPR done, and it ranges from 70 to 90 percent. We know that that isn't the case in the medical side of this. Nationwide, the survivability from a cardiac arrest is about 8 percent. We're lucky in Alina EMS communities where we have these great team members, and we track this on a yearly basis, that Coon Rapids is about double that, about 15 to 16 percent. And I know that doesn't sound like a big number, but remember that even though that's not statistically significant, that small percentage is just that 1 or 2 percent that we try to get better every year is one or more, two more people that are back home with their families for Christmas. So I think that's what really matters, and I have kids, and one of my favorite Mr. Rogers' quotes is, you know what, when you're watching the news or you have something really bad and emergency happen around you, don't worry, kids, don't look at the really bad side of this, look at all the helpers that are running towards the emergency. And I think that even though some of these folks here are probably ordered here for recognition, these are really the heroes that make this happen every day, and I couldn't be prouder to serve with them. So I wish everybody a happy holidays, and what a great time of year to be able to have such a nice celebration.
Mayor, councilmembers, the last thing we're going to do is now Eric is going to hand out some appreciation award certificates to all the first responders, so if you just bear with us for about 30 seconds, please. This is probably the highlight of our month here, so.
Budget's coming up. Budget's coming.
Communication people first, then Alina Transportation, then Police, then Fire Department over here. They're going to work from there.
Do you want to take the center stage? Oh, okay. Get the kids up there. Here, let the council over there get that going, too. So we got to get these hands for him. I guess, what? Just call. Come on.
Jenny.
You're good. I got it.
Good to see you.
Justin Height.
Steve.
Thanks so much. How did you deal with your last name, Spike?
No attempt.
Chief, should we have the council stand and gather in the center?
Sure.
All right, perfect.
These firefighters weren't so tall.
Oh, Plots is going to take it? You should be in it somewhere. You're the one that started this whole thing.
Sorry.
Counsel, if you could try to maybe look a little better?
Sorry.
It's the best you're going to get.
It's hard.
Have to blame the voters on that one.
Say, just a real quick personal.
So, hey, Plots, Officer Plots, what are we doing AED training around town again? Is there anything, as long as there's an open mic here, anything you wanted to tell us about?
I don't know.
It's the longest I've heard you quiet.
Start the timer again.
Yeah, this is your fault. Everyone's a witness here. Listen, things like this, they're becoming more and more commonplace. It used to be we would go to these calls not too long ago and just expect the worst, that 97 percent fatality rate for emergency services, and now look at this, these are becoming more and more common. The fact that we're at 16 percent, which is one of the highest survival rates in the state, is amazing, which makes us the highest survival rate in the nation. So it shows that this team-based approach, starting with the recognition and the early recognition and equipping your emergency responders with the proper tools, is working. That's a family. They get a Christmas together. Little known fact, Officer Brown is going to be that beautiful little girl's dare teacher next year. So how, you know, so you think about the dynamics of this, and it's amazing, what a great Christmas present for this family. Training's still ongoing. All you have to do to get ahold of me is email heartsafe@coonrapidsmn.gov. I'll come train in your garage if you want me to. Whatever you want me to train, I'll come and train. We also do have access to most city facilities if you want to set up a group training, so we're almost at 20,000 people, or like 19,600 and something, just in the city alone, so let's, let's get that 20,000 before the end of the year, huh? And then, and then what's the easiest way to find the YouTube videos? You've done some tremendous YouTube videos, training videos. Just go to YouTube and look up HeartSafe, capital H, lowercase safe, and you'll see we have a cardiac arrest in schools with kids, cardiac arrest in the workplace, cardiac arrests in sports, and then we did a hip, fresh rock and roll music video for the kids, you know, since, since the Bee Gees aren't so cool anymore. I know they're riding your wheelhouse, Mr. Mayor, or your wheelhouse, Mr. Mayor, but the kids just don't dig it as much, so, and they don't like Baby Shark anymore either, so. But yeah, if they go to that YouTube channel, they can, they can watch them videos, they're 100 percent free and for public use, and they're designed to be training videos, six, seven-minute training videos, so. But I appreciate your time, guys, and thank you for having me up here. Thanks for, thanks for everything you do, Ryan. Thank you. All right. Up to item two on our consent agenda, the Community Strength Foundation. Representatives from the Community Strength Foundation will be in attendance to provide an update for council. Looks like former Mayor Tim Howe is coming up to the mic, along with Diane, who's at everything.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just the moral support.
The, I, this kind of reminds me, that was a very emotional thing, the first time I had to do public speaking as a council member was for a World War II celebration at the American Legion, and they had me follow Father Riser.
Yeah, good luck.
I'm here on behalf of the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. We, at our last meeting, we had a discussion where some of the members, the fairly new members, were interested in, in exactly how we came about and what we really do, and we haven't done a really good job of, when we brought these new members on board, of giving them a little bit more information, and that's something that we plan to do. But at the same time, we got to talk, and I said, boy, it'd be nice to go before the council. We have new council members here, and where you may know the basis, we thought it would be an appropriate time to maybe update you on a little bit of the background of where the Community Strength Foundation comes from and what we are doing, because you're a big part of it, that makes it happen, so. Of course, we borrowed a portion of the city tagline or slogan, "Community Strength for Generations," and we became the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. This group was formed about nine or 10 years ago during what they call the Great Recession, and we did not know if we were going to be able to have fireworks in the, in the Fourth of July celebration in Coon Rapids that had been going on for 30, 40 years at that time. Some of us got together and thought, what can we do? And did some researching and some calling around, and what we found out is that there were communities out there that had, separate from their city entities and themselves, they had foundations, and their main focus was to support events in their communities, festivals, art events, and those type of things. They exist in the Twin Cities in different sizes, from smaller ones in New Brighton to if you go to Edina's Community Foundation, it's, it's a really large operation. And we took a look at those and said, okay, how can we go about doing this? We set forward to get certified as a 501(c)(3), we thought that was one of our first steps we needed to do, and that takes some time, as anyone that's been involved with that. And within a year and a half, two years or so, we were able to get that certification. We wanted to create, as a first goal, a vision and a mission, and we came up with a mission statement, and that mission statement is to promote and enhance the quality of life in the city of Coon Rapids by supporting community celebrations and events. And that's fairly short and concise, and that was our goal, to try to get it there, but it was quite a discussion. We had a lot of things on the board, and, and we condensed it down to there. Our main focus, we came up with, is really to support those family-focused events, ones that there was no charge and that were open to all, and we thought that was important. Of course, the fireworks and the Fourth of July celebration in partnership with the North Star Lions and the Coon Rapids Firefighters Relief Association is one of the main events that we help fund and are part of. The movies in the park with the city of Coon Rapids, semi-annual event that they have, we help fund. The summer concert series in the park that are held at the dam with the city and the great work of the city's Art Commission, we, we helped fund those concerts. We support several of the Coon Rapids Snowflake Days events, our winter celebration here in the city. The annual kids' fishing clinic at the dam, and now that is being run by the county, but we give financial support to keep that thing going. They didn't know if we were going to be able to keep that going, and they reached out to the different organizations around the northern suburbs here, and we're one of them that donates to that. Secondly, we, in a limited capacity, we support other events in our city that we feel are important to our community, but they might not quite fit into our all-inclusive criteria that we have. The Coon Rapids HeartSafe program, we've made several donations to that, the Coon Rapids Scholarship Association, the Senior All Night Party, the Coon Rapids Transformation Circle, the Coon Rapids Pet Fair is one of the latest things that we've contributed to, the Coon Rapids Firecracker Run, that was established a few years ago, and there's others that we've done over the years, but that's just some of them that I wanted to mention. In partnership with the city, we were able to develop a funding resource, and this is a little bit unique to our community and different than a lot of those foundations. We came up with, in an agreement with the city council and the city staff, that charitable gambling would donate 5 percent to the community, to the city of Coon Rapids, and in turn, a large portion of that you give to the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. We also receive money that's passed on from you from the Twin Cities Gateway Tourism and Visitors Bureau, and we think that's a good fit because our events really promote the city. Beyond that, we also get contributions from individuals and businesses, and if you don't mind, Councilmember Geisler, I'd like to use an example of, of your Aunt Donna Knave, when she passed here about four years ago, almost to the day. And in a request by the family or a suggestion, they could make donations to the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation, and over 70 individuals and families contributed to our foundation and is, was a great boost to our foundation, and so in her memory and her love and dedication for this community, that, that I think was a wonderful thing. We also act as, and I stole this line from the Edina website and their foundation, we act as a giving partner. And what that means is, there may be organizations out there that are looking to get contributions, say, from businesses, but they can't do them on a tax-deductible form because they're not a 501(c)(3) organization, and we act as a conduit for them so that they can give those contributions to the foundation, and we in turn make a contribution to that event that they may have going on. When we sat down to figure out how to establish this board, we, we thought it would only be right because these charitable gambling organizations in our city that are contributing to this should have a say in our board. So we offered seats to all of the different charitable gambling organizations here. They include the Coon Rapids Cardinal Little League, the Coon Rapids Lions, Coon Rapids VFW, the Coon Rapids Legion, Coon Rapids Mat Bandits, the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey, and our newest charitable gambling organization, the Coon Rapids Competitive Cheer Organization, and they all have a, are offered a position on our seat. Not all of them take advantage of it, and some of them are highly involved in it, it just depends on those organizations.
And they all have a vote.
And they all have a vote. We also wanted to reach out to other civic groups in our community, so the Coon Rapids North Star Lions, the Coon Rapids Snowflake Days Association, the Rotary, the Coon Rapids Arts Commission, the Firefighters Relief Association, Coon Rapids Athletic Association, and even a city council representative, in your case, your at-large council member Steve Wells attends our meetings, and we also have six at-large members. Now, it sounds like a lot of people on a board, but in fact, many of the organizations don't have somebody that's in active attendance, as we call it, so our majority vote right now, I believe, is at eight to be in majority, so we have 15 active members right at this point. Most of these people that come to our meetings come from other organizations where they're very busy and active in those organizations, but they take the time to come to our monthly meetings, and we also do business by email on a lot of cases. We also have some recent happening that we had in conjunction, again, with the city, and that I think is really exciting, and I think you, councilmembers, have seen it, and that's the concert portable stage trailer that we, in a joint effort with the city, have purchased, and I think it's that the community will see around at events here often in the years to come, we hope in many, many years to come. I want to, if I can, plug our website, which is www.coonrapidscommunitystrengthfoundation.com, and you can get more information there. Grant request forms, if you have an organization in the city that would like to seek some funds, funding from us, we will make that decision totally as a board as to whether to grant those grant requests, and also there are donation opportunities on our website for businesses or individuals that are out there. Tonight, I have Diane Pusta here with me, and Diane is our secretary, and she also is with the Coon Rapids Snowflake Days. I think that's the seat you hold on the board, although she's involved with the North Star Lions and, and very active in our community. Donna Scholz back there in the back, and she represents the Coon Rapids Lions on our board, and, but we have a great group of individuals, we have some very active discussions of what to do with the funding that we have available, and we think we make a difference in our community, and hopefully we can into the future do that. And I thank you for your time. If there's any questions, it'd be glad to answer.
There's also an application on our website if people are interested in serving.
future, do that. And thank you for your time. If there's any questions, it'd be glad to answer.
There's also an application on our website, if people are interested in serving in our organization. They should fill that out. We do elections once a year, and at-large tend to turn over sometimes. And we put them on, we interview them, put them on the list. So if anybody in the community is interested in serving at-large, which is what all those members are, just community members, please go on the website and fill out the application. And we'll be sure to reach out to them, so.
Seems like nearly every event going on around the city, there's a tagline in there somewhere, "Community Strength Foundation." So, yeah.
We're hoping to keep that going. And I think we can all be proud of our fireworks show that we put on. I hear that all over the place when I travel around the Twin Cities. Oh, yeah, we went to your fireworks show, and it's unbelievable, and we want to keep that going.
We increased it again for this next year.
Nice. All right. Any questions for them?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, back to my agenda here. All right. Well, we are up to item three on our agenda, to approve the minutes of the November 20th, 2018 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 20th meeting. Yeah.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Wells. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion is passed. Then we had a, we're looking at approving minutes from the special meeting on November 13th, 2018. That's item number four.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I also move to approve the minutes from the November 13th special meeting.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion?
One comment and the title of the meeting minutes changed 2016 to 2018.
Sure.
Missed that. All right. Any other discussion or request, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
That motion passes. One abstention, Councilmember Geisler. All right. And we are up to the consent agenda. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items. First item on the consent agenda is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Ming Massage LLC, 11284 Robinson Drive. And I'm just going to say Ms. G, because I'm not sure how that's pronounced. Has taken ownership of Angel's Massage, changed the business name to Ming Massage, and leased the same space in the building at 11284 Robinson Drive. Ms. G has paid the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. She has also provided proof of the required liability insurance, and the approval is contingent upon the Police Department background investigation findings. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Ms. G for Ming Massage LLC, located at 11284 Robinson Drive Northwest, pending a successful background investigation. Item six, which is the second item on our consent agenda, is to adopt resolution number 18-117, amending the 2018 stormwater budget. Staff has obtained the attached quote to purchase nine GPS units from Precise Mobile Resource Management for a total cost of $2,565. The devices provide reliable asset management, combining a GPS receiver and cellular radio to efficiently capture and transfer location and utilization data of various assets. The system provides Internet-based reporting, along with an advanced data export interface to integrate with existing asset management solutions. The purchase is allocated in the draft 2019 budget, but the staff would like to purchase units for use through the 2018, 2019 winter season. And so we're looking to authorize resolution 18-117, amending the 2018 stormwater fund for the purchase of GPS units for city-owned street sweeping and snow plowing equipment. Next item on our agenda is item seven, which is the third item on the consent agenda, adopt resolution number 18-120, establishing polling locations for 2019. So, yeah, we'll be looking at adopting resolution 18-120, establishing polling locations for 2019. Item eight, next item on the consent agenda, we're looking to adopt resolution 18-121, accepting a $10,000 donation on behalf of the Cosse Family Foundation of the St. Paul Foundation to be used to purchase Swift Water Rescue Team equipment. Yeah, I guess that was everything there. Item nine is to, on the consent agenda, is to approve the 2019 business license renewals subject to compliance with city code. And item 10 is informational only. We've had corporate officer changes at Costco Wholesale, Wholesale Corporation, Pawn America, at 15 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Texas Roadhouse at 2780 Main Street, and Speedway, which, of course, used to be SA, at both locations on Coon Rapids Boulevard and one location on Northdale Boulevard. That's just for information only. And the last item on the consent agenda is to approve issuance of Bowling Alley On Sale Class A Sunday Tavern and 2:00 AM Liquor licenses to Triple Shift Entertainment LLC, doing business as Classic Bowl 11707, Round Lake Boulevard Northwest, contingent upon completion of successful background investigations and Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. And that should be the complete consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker and a second by Geisler to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion?
Your Honor.
Wow. Councilmember Wells.
It's not totally relevant, but I'm curious to city clerk in regards to our polling places. I've been told that Anoka, Hanupin, not next year, but in 2020, if in fact they allow polling, will close the schools, which I realize wouldn't affect us, but if they were to go the other way and say they didn't want. Is that discussion taking place at all?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wells, the school district is not allowed by state law to prevent us from using the buildings. We will do what we can to work with them. Right now, it's a public building and can be used for polling rotation.
So that's why they're talking about not having school that day?
That's why we're having discussion about not having school that day and making it a teacher and service day.
Thank you.
Councilmember Demmer.
I was actually curious, so on Ward Three, Precinct Four, it had been at the Spirit of Grace, which is in Ward Three, Precinct Four, and then this year, we held it at the VFW, which is in Precinct Three. Do you think we'll get back to something that's in Three, Four at some point? I know that Spirit of Grace is under construction now.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, yes, that is the goal. Spirit of Grace loves hosting and has asked that we please move it back. We can't do that for 2019. It's too...
Not ready.
Right. Uncertain.
Great.
In the event, there should be something. We're not planning on, but if we do have to have a special, we would need to be ready to go. So that will be, for 2020, we hope to do so.
It's always good if the polling places can be in their precincts.
Correct.
Ms. Lenzmeyer, how is the Anoka County Sheriff's Office working out? Because I know we've got two different precincts that poll there, and I thought they had some parking issues or some congestion or in the past. Is that, how's that working out now?
Mr. Mayor, we've had no concerns, especially now that we're voting 22-plus percent of the voters ahead of time. And we also, for the general, we don't do it for the primary because turnout isn't quite the same. For the general, we have public works staff put the no parking signs along the street. I drove up there three different times and did not see anyone needing to use the street for this one. The presidential turnout will be a little heavier, but we think we can accommodate it with the plan that we have with using the street parking.
And then the second question was, we chatted about this before, but the, some of the poller, the people that worked at the polling were wondering about Riverwind. When that's, when that's complete, if they could maybe move that precinct from Morris by, you know, Ward One, Precinct Three, so 1-3, over to Riverwind maybe in 2020?
Mr. Mayor, we're open to that. I'll just need to make sure it meets all the requirements and that the building is, you know, ready to go. And has heat and air and all of that good stuff.
Heat and air, should be all there.
It didn't before.
Councilmember Demmer.
You know, one more thing, just to think about, not at this meeting, but if it did cause that many schools to be closed, then a lot of, you know, I know whenever there's a snow day or anything like that and people have trouble getting off work, kids end up home alone. And, you know, I know that that's a reality for some families. So if it were possible to at least evaluate whether some of these, if there were alternate places to hold polling instead of at the schools, if that's what it led to, not for 2019, but as a, as a conversation piece, I know you'll work with them on that, but forcing the school district into a place where they feel like they'd have to close school might, might have some negative consequences.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, to be honest, the school district and I have had conversations since I started here in 2014. They haven't wanted to go to a place where they didn't want our election there because it shows kids the civic process. Things continue to change in our communities and our society that they're going to have to now have that conversation about whether it's a teacher and service day.
Yeah, and I'm not...
We will, we're open to it. The problem we have is there are not large enough buildings. We've had kind of a cursory overview of, hey, could we do that? It would be a struggle, but I'm certainly open to working with the school district and doing the best job we can.
And I'm in no way saying that they're trying to kick us out or that we're trying not to get there.
Oh, they're not, no.
Just the realities of, yeah, it's great, the kids get to see the voting. On the flip side, if they get to a point where they feel like, security-wise, they can't have school that day, we just have to weigh the consequences that could happen in the community on, on those sort of days. So just, I'm sure you're working on it, just making sure that, that...
We will do our part and work well with them.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You have voted on that, right?
Correct. Correct.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Unrelated to what you were talking about, the polling, that number six, the resolution 18117, amending the stormwater budget, I assume that's budget-neutral? It says it's re-appropriated. Where is it re-appropriated from?
That's for the GPS units.
Councilmember Griscoviac, that will come out of the Stormwater Utility Fund. It is included in the 2019 budget that you're going to hear about earlier, so we're just loaning ourselves some money for about three weeks until those dollars get in, and then we replenish it with the amount that was budgeted for next year.
Okay. That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. Item 12, we're looking at holding a public hearing for our truth in taxation. And, let's see. Ms. Leng, is there going to be a presentation?
Yes, I do have a presentation. And then we, you know, we've got to open it up for public comment.
Okay. So we'll start with that then.
So tonight, we are required by Minnesota statutes to hold a truth in taxation hearing before we adopt our budget and our tax levy. Tonight, we're here to talk about the tax levy. We had a meeting in the spring where we talked about values, and oftentimes, it gets mixed up. Is our taxes going up due to values, or are they going up due to tax increases? And we'll kind of talk about the tax side of it tonight. In the spring, we talked about values. We have had a few calls, we've actually only had 11 calls about, after people got their truth in taxation notices. So we really did not have very many calls at all this year. We did put a copy of this handle, too, in the back, just so people, if they want to use it, they can use it. So with that, I'll just kind of talk about what, where we were and where we're headed here. The city council reviewed our original budget that the staff proposed on August 15th. Staff starts working on the budget in about May, when we get all the requests from all the activities and all the departments, put together a budget, and we presented that to council in August. On September 4th, the city council adopted a preliminary tax levy, which we certified to the county. That preliminary levy can be decreased from that point, but it cannot be increased. So tonight, if the city council so choose, they could lower the levy, but they cannot increase it. So after that, the county takes that information, and they spread the tax levy that we sent to them to all the taxpayers in the city. So they come up, they take the dollars that we're proposing to levy, divided by all the value that all of our houses and commercial industrial contributes, come up with a rate, apply that to the value, and that's how you come up with the amount of taxes that are being proposed. So people did get that truth in taxation statement, where it showed their 2018 and what's being proposed for 2019, and tells them to show up tonight for our meeting. Same thing for the schools. They have a meeting, and then the county has a meeting. So we're at the truth in taxation hearing. After the hearing, after we open it up to the public, then staff will ask city council to adopt the budget and the levy, which are included in resolutions. So what, what we did when we prepared this budget, first of all, we've got like the guiding principles, you might say, of what we need to do. We've got to perform our core services. We've got things to do that, you know, like the normal, the police and the fire and the street reconstruction, or I mean, the street maintenance, the park maintenance, admin assessing, you know, IT, all those kinds of things. Then the city council's got some long-range goals that they've talked about for years. We do have a strategic plan. Basically, one of the things in the plan is basically to maintain good transportation system, to provide excellent service, to be inclusive, to make it a good place to live. So we've got those guiding principles that we follow. The other thing that we do is, when we're looking at putting together the budget, we try to be reasonable. We try to think about what, what's going on in the community, how taxes are going to impact people, and we try to maintain the tax rate at a reasonable amount or the tax levy at a lower increase. And then the last thing that we do, other than have a balanced budget, is we try to maintain our fund balance policy, which we do. We measure our fund balance against next year's proposed expenditures at 45%. This has served the city well, where we have this 45% fund balance policy. It's been stated in Moody's. We just had that bond rating, and again, Moody's addressed that and said that that's a policy that helps us get a really good bond rating. After that, I just want to point out, too, we did this budget in brief, and I believe that Joan made some copies of that. If they're not, if you didn't make copies, there, it is on our website. You can go to our website and see the budget in brief, which is just kind of a very succinct information of what's going on in the 2019 budget. And then the whole budget document is out there as well. So you can see all the detail that the city council saw in the budget, if you're so inclined. This is just for perspective. We put the, some of these slides in just because it's hard to know, where does Coon Rapids lie when you just talk about our rate? What does our rate mean? So this is 2018. There's three years that we've kind of presented here, but it was sorted on 2018's rate. So in 2000, I'll use this right here, 2018, the city of Coon Rapids was right here. We had a rate of 42.368. You can see that the cities that are higher than us, for example, just kind of go up the line here, it's North St. Paul, Apple Valley, Burnsville, Maplewood, St. Louis Park, Fridley, Brooklyn Park, Golden Valley, New Hope, Richfield, and Brooklyn Center. So that's going up the line. Some of the cities that have rates that are lower than ours, if I just went backwards, we'd be looking at Bloomington, Roseville, New Brighton, Maple Grove, Lakeville, Eagan, Blaine, Blaine is about here, Minnetoka, Andover, Shoreview, Eden Prairie, Edina, Plymouth, Arden Hills, Vatness Heights, and Whiteboro Lake. So this is, the rate, again, is a function of the amount of taxes you're levying, divided by your value. So if you think about Edina, which is a, you know, a kind of an obvious example, they've got a lot of value, so whatever their taxes are, divided by that big value... So whatever their taxes are divided by that big value, that's going to lower their rate. Um, so that's just perspective. And a little bit more perspective. So these are the three, last three years of what our rate was. This is just Anoka County and you can see the Coon Rapids rate for two thousand eighteen, as I said, was forty-two point three six eight. It was the sixth lowest in two thousand and eighteen, sixth lowest in seventeen and the seventh lowest in eighteen. Um, where do the taxes come from? This is based on the properties. So what we are looking at is most of our city, of course, is residential. So this, this red part here is residential, about fifty percent of the value that, um, the taxes are, um, spread to is residential. And then we've got fiscal disparities, which we are receiver of. Fiscal disparities, I won't get into it tonight, but we do get value back from the fiscal disparities pot, which actually lowers our levy. You take our levy, subtract out the amount that we get from fiscal disparity, that's the, the value that gets spread against all the, um, properties. Commercial industrial properties contribute about fifteen point six percent, apartments thirteen point seven percent, and then this is personal property and then all other, um, levies, or I mean, properties, I'm sorry. Um, there's some things in there like seasonal and railroad and some things like that. Um, then where does all the revenue come from? So we've got a number of funds in the city. We talk a lot about the general fund, which is our, um, our, the general fund provides most of the, um, maintenance type services for the city. But we've got capital project funds where we do a lot of our capital improvements. We've got enterprise funds like the golf course, which is an enterprise self-supporting, water sewer, storm are also self-supporting. We've got our debt service funds, which pay the debt on any debt service or bonds that we issue. We issue bonds for things like when we built the arena. We issue bonds for when we do street reconstruction. So our portion, we're levying back to the, um, taxpayers. Because when we do street reconstruction, we assess a portion of it and the city pays a portion. And that portion that the city's contributing, we get from taxes. So they're, um, in a special fund, the bonds. So this just kind of shows where all, where all the revenues for all these funds come from. So forty percent of it comes from taxes. Most of what we get is from taxes. We do charge for a number of services. Um, we charge for, um, uh, well, we charge for assessments, for example. We charge for police services, some, some fire services. Um, we've got the arena, for example. We've got the civic center where we charge for. So there's a number of things that we actually charge for. So we do get revenues from that as well. And then we still have some intergovernmental type revenue. Um, we've got licenses and permits where we're issuing building permits and, and like liquor licenses. We get revenue from that. Um, we've got fines and forfeits, um, which we, from, you know, traffic tickets, that kind of revenue. We have investment income because we do have cash and we invest it. And then all other revenues are about fifteen percent. And same story, these are expenditures for all the funds in the city. Personal services are about thirty-eight percent of them. Um, but we do contract for, um, a lot of services. So we've got contract labor. We've got charges for services where we're buying things. We've got supplies. Disposable charges are what we pay to the metropolitan council for sewer disposal, um, capital improvements, um, our principal interest on the debt that I talked about and depreciation. In our enterprise funds, we actually depreciate the assets, so that is an expense. Um, here are the numbers that back that up. So the general fund is the biggest, biggest pot of money, you might say. This is our largest expenditures. And you can see that the expenditures for that fund were proposed to go up nearly four percent, three point nine six percent. Um, then the other fund types that we've got are special revenue. One of the funds in there is cable TV, for example. Another is recycling. So we've got, um, in that group of funds, it's like special purpose funds. The debt, I talked about a little bit. That's all the debt service on our, um, debt, um, capital projects. And I can talk about these percents a little bit here. Um, I didn't get into a whole lot of detail, but, um, some of these things, why they went up and down, and I can address that a little bit more if there's questions. But for example, the capital project funds, we've got a park improvements in there where we're continuing to do the park referendum. So all those capital projects are in there. So that's showing a twenty percent increase. That also includes where we're doing street reconstruction and any infrastructure like building improvements. And we've got a number of those in this budget this year because we did a space study. There are some improvements that we needed for this building, public works and the fire stations. And some of that is included in here. Um, some of these funds were pretty stable from one year to the next, like the water fund, sewer fund. They're pretty darn constant. Stormwater went down a little bit. The golf course went up, uh, mainly because we include in the golf operation, the restaurant. The restaurant has been a lot busier, thus there's more salaries, there's more cost of goods sold because we're selling more product. So that's the big portion of that increase. Um, so overall, our budget of all the funds that we have, and this does fluctuate a lot from year to year, depending on how many capital improvement type projects we have. But that's proposed to go up about six point seven percent. The tax levy broken down is, um, the biggest part goes into the general fund. Then we've got the debt service funds that I sort of talked about, capital projects. Capital projects funds I haven't really talked about, but that would include, um, things like, um, seal coating, um, our equipment, that we've got a replacement schedule for our equipment. Um, we've got Emerald Ash Bore. Um, we have a levy that's special to try to deal with the Emerald Ash Bore issue. That would go into capital projects. So that gives us a total levy of twenty-eight point two million. In addition to our regular levy, we also have an HRA levy, which has been pretty constant for the last few years at about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Our HRA is a little bit of a separate entity, so they're two separate tax levies. And this just kind of shows what's happening for the, the general fund levy, the blue one, the, the most of the levy goes to the general fund. But yet the port, the percent is actually decreasing, which again, I feel like is a good thing because that means we're putting more money into investments or infrastructure rather than just maintenance. And this is the historical. It just kind of shows the general fund, what kind of increases we've had in the general fund. Here's the numbers. For two thousand nineteen, we're proposing about a four percent increase in the general fund, whereas the total levy is proposed to go up about five point one seven percent. And this just is showing the, the, the millions of the levy. So this is twenty-eight million, this total levy right here, which correlates to that, the prior graph. And now we're just looking at revenues for the general fund. The general fund, most of the money comes from property taxes because we don't have the big numbers in here like special assessments, for example, or golf or water sewer, those kinds of things. So most of the money for the general fund, which is just maintenance, it's not an enterprise type operations, taxes pay for things people don't typically want to pay for, you know, like, like police and fire and streets and that kind of stuff. I'll just kind of keep moving here. Um, there's the numbers, um, taxes going up about four percent for the general fund. Um, looking at all the other different, different categories of revenues, they're mostly consistent. Some of these things are actually going down. And that's a little bit of an issue is we have to rely more and more on property taxes because we don't have the opportunity to get revenues from a whole lot of other places. So that becomes pressure on taxes. So overall, the revenues in the general fund should go up about two point five percent. Expenditures, this is the graph of the expenditures for the general fund. General fund consists mostly of services. So it's personal services. Eighty percent of the budget is personal services, which is, which is payroll and workers' comp, health insurance, um, any other benefits. Then the next big category is charges and services. And then we've got supplies, for example, like we have to have fuel, you know, all the things we buy, paper, products, things like that. And in the general fund, there's not a whole lot of capital outlay because we kind of separate that out into one of the capital project funds. Um, next, this is just by, um, department. So if you look at a public safety, which is combined here for police and fires, basically half of the general fund budget. And then we've got maintenance, which is parks and street maintenance, um, community services, which is, um, things like the civic center where we rent out space, the senior center, um, community ed, things like that. General government, which is admin, so finance, manager, IT, attorney, things like that. And community development, which is planning, inspection, housing programs. And there are the numbers to back them up. So you can see, um, each area, what's, what's really happening. A lot of these are actually going down. Prosecution is going down. Um, we separated that out because that's actually going down kind of a lot. But the reason that's going down is because we, when we built this budget, when we took on prosecution for the city of Fridley, we weren't sure what it was going to cost us. And as it's kind of evolved, it's, we've got a year under our belt and it's not costing as much as, as we anticipated. So that's actually the reason for that going down. The other ones, uh, most of this is pretty much like a cost of living sort of, um, number because most of it is personal services, um, that kind of follows that you're going to have like a two or a three percent increase. Um, community service, I'm trying to remember what happened in community service, why that one went up about that. I did kind of go through all this today. Um, community service. Oh, I know why. Um, it's because in community service, we've got fourteen thousand of capital outlay in there for the civic center, which actually just throws that number. It makes it look a lot higher. Um, so overall, our expenditures in the general fund are going up about two percent. We just kind of go through the budget and we try to pick out just the real highlights, what, what impacts this budget. And you know, it's really hard to say, what are we doing? Because we do so many different things and everything sort of adds up. Nothing is, is astounding. I mean, it's not like one big thing that we're doing, but there's a lot of things that happen. So there's no election in two thousand nineteen, so that saves a lot of money. Um, we, we do have in this budget money to replace all of the police and fire radios, which is on the agenda for tonight. It's in the two thousand nineteen budget, but we'd like to place the order so we can get an extra, um, discount that the vendor is offering. So for the police department, that amounts to about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And if you read the memo tonight, these radios are really old radios, but we've basically gotten to a point where there's no longer going to be service on these radios as of January first. Motorola is the carrier. Um, they're no longer going to service them. Um, and our radios for the police department do not talk to the other, um, the other area departments because they've already updated to the new radio. So we're, we're sort of the last to update. So it's a big number. We put it off knowing that it was going to happen, but we got as much as we could out of the radios that we had. Um, I guess so. We'll let John talk about it. How's that? So there's John's radios. Um, now in the memo tonight, that amount is actually going down because, um, we have changed some of the, the, um, what we're doing with the radios. We're not replacing all the truck radios and he's not, won't have as many portable radios. John can talk about that one. How's that? And then John, or the fire department also has a rescue vehicle in there. Now what's happening on this is, is it's downsizing the size of the vehicle. It used to be a big freight liner and now it's going to be more of a suburban type, um, vehicle. But when it's outfitted, it, it still adds up to about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that we're replacing, that was, that freight liner uh, was a two thousand and eight. No, that was a two thousand and nine. Okay, that's a two thousand and nine that we're replacing. Um, in transportation, we've been doing street reconstruction for many years. We've got about ten point three miles in there that we've, we've been pretty aggressive in terms of street reconstruction. So you can see that. And when we look at our levy, that levy actually has gone up um, because we've been pretty aggressive in that. Um, we continue to seal coat. This number's been fairly constant, but we've been doing pretty much the same amount of seal coating each year. And then there's a dump truck in the street department and that is a two thousand eight freight liner that we're proposing to replace. We try to get as much as we can out of these vehicles. We've kind of delayed replacing them. You know, they used to be on a more rapid replacement schedule, but now we've got a fund where we can kind of push them to the limit and if we have to buy them, we buy them. Um, quality of life kinds of improvements. I talked a little bit about the park improvement bond, so we've got in there, um, about two point seven or two point eight million dollars for the park improvements that were authorized by the referendum. Included in that is the Lions Park, um, project. And there's also about one point, the Lions Park is one point two million and there's about a million six that is trails. The trails may not all get done this year, but we've included all of those in there. So they're in the budget. We can work on as much as we can get done. In addition, there's three hundred thousand that's not park referendum budgets that we've just continually had in our budgets for the last number of years. We try to renovate a, a park, uh, maybe not as fully as we do for the referendum type improvements, but we still try to keep some of the smaller parks updated. Um, we've talked about putting in a concession stand at the soccer complex. That's an eighty thousand dollar, um, estimate. Uh, a bridge in Erlinson Park for ninety thousand, um, netting at Sand Creek and, uh, funding for the youth first partnership that we, we recently got involved with. And I don't have a ton left here, just in case you're getting anxious, but um, okay. So city buildings, I talked about how we did the space study. So the space study, I mean, we knew about a lot of these things, but we just sort of had a comprehensive study done to kind of address all the issues that we have in the buildings that I earlier mentioned. But this building has had issues with the windows, so that's included in the budget for two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Some exterior doors for the, um, public works department. There's some ventilation needs in the public works departments. And then there's a, a bunch of other miscellaneous items that I, I will show you a little bit more detail. It's a little bit hard to read, but, um, there's doors in there, for example, for this building, which, um, has been kind of carried forward for a couple of years, but, um, other improvements in there. Personnel, personnel is a big expense in our budget. So what we've done in terms of positions, we've added one and, and eliminated one. So we've kind of split the facility fleet position into two positions. So we have a, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we don't have yet, but a facility maintenance position, um, and then have the fleet person be a separate position. But we also eliminated one of the public works administrative positions to try to make that neutral. Um, we do have a part-time recreation administrative position added. This is to help when we're doing the scheduling, setting up leagues to try to do some of that, the, um, paperwork that's, that kind of goes along with that. We've included a cost of living in this budget, um, health insurance. We've got our, our, our rates. They went up about seven point six percent. The city's covering about half of that increase. And then para, the Public Employees Retirement Association, which basically passes laws or the legislature allows them to, um, say what their increases have to be. They've increased the amount that we're supposed to contribute for police and fire from sixteen point two to sixteen point nine five percent. The rest of the groups, there's a coordinated group that stays the same. And then there's a decrease for workers' comp. We had a big increase last year. We've got a smaller decrease this, a big decrease last year and a smaller decrease this year because we've had much better experience, which just drives our workers' comp premiums down, which is really good. Um, talking about sidewalks, we've got two hundred and fifty thousand or so in there to do infill. We've got a hundred and fifty thousand in there for that Emerald Ash Bore where we're replacing, um, Emerald Ash trees that have been removed and a lot of this is to do tree removal. And capital equipment, I mentioned that we have like a replacement schedule for all of our vehicles. We try to project out what we're going to need for the next ten years and have money set aside that we keep replenishing every year to try to have kind of a constant levy for our capital equipment. So we don't have big spikes when we need to buy six dump trucks, for example. The debt, we talked about arena. We've got nine hundred and ninety-one thousand a year that we levy to, for paying for that building. Street reconstruction, I kind of mentioned that earlier. Um, it's going to be one point seven million next year in our levy versus one point three million for pay eighteen. And at some point, that's going to hopefully level off because some of these levies are dropping off. And as one comes on, one's going to drop off and hopefully costs don't go up a whole lot, so they can stay kind of constant. Um, here's the list of vehicles. We've got police vehicles that we replace pretty much every year. We've got police vehicles that we replace pretty much every year. Not all of them, but we try to get four years out of some of them, three years out of other ones. And they're on our schedule. We've got seven years, I mean, seven vehicles that we've got included in there for that. That same rescue truck I talked about earlier. We've got a vehicle for property maintenance. This is the housing inspections that we do. So there's a vehicle in that there for that. And that dump truck we talked about earlier. We've got this equipment mover for the parks, I guess is maybe the best way to say that. And then we've got a Toro Soto Workman in there for parks and a sixteen foot more. Those are expensive. Water, sewer, the other funds. We've been continually rehabbing some of our wells. I mean, we're kind of on like a program where we do, and it's basically been about the same amount every year. We still haven't acquired the land for our new water tower, so we keep carrying forward that money. It's not, it's just the same money, but we keep moving it to the next year's budget. We're proposing to replace the filter media in the water treatment plant. Basically, you lose that medium, media over time and you have to add it back. I mean, I think it's basically sand that's filtering the water. The HVAC repairs for water treatment. There's a number of ventilation issues out there. And then we've got water sewer and storm lines that we do in conjunction with the street reconstruction projects. These get charged back to the water sewer and storm funds. So they're covered in the future with your water and sewer rates. And here's the list of all the improvements. So there's that six hundred and fifty-two thousand. That includes those windows, it includes those doors, it includes the doors for this building and the ventilation. And that's, you know, there's a lot of detail there. But, okay. And then here's the impact. These are the last few slides here now. But we try to show what does this do to our benchmark homes. Our benchmark homes are homes that we've been tracking for like twenty-five years. What happens? So sometimes these homes have improvements, so their values may be going up. And sometimes they may be going down. Now, this first house is the one that's really being impacted the most. This is a lower value house. And as you know, lower valued houses have been hot commodities because they're not building them, there's just not that many on the market. So because they're so hot, the prices are going up. There's so much demand for them. So the taxes on this one, it looks really significant. It would be like a ninety-four dollar increase and that's about a twenty-three percent increase. After this now, it's going to calm down a little bit. The other thing that happens too, I'll just kind of point out is as your value goes up, the amount of market value exclusion goes down. So it's sort of a double whammy when this happens. Because the max market value exclusion you get is when your house is at seventy-six thousand dollars. But then as a house gets up to four hundred and fourteen, it basically goes away. So the more expensive a house you live in, the less exclusion you get, i.e. the more taxes you pay. And then the second house, that's a little bit more constant here now, about a two percent increase, sixteen dollars. And remember, these are only the city taxes. I'm not talking about the school or the county. That's, they're doing their own meetings and all that. The third house is going up about seven point seven percent, or that house shows a sixty-four dollar increase. I probably should have looked at this house to see what all's going on, but you can see the value went up by nine percent. So that house either had some improvement to increase that value or it just happened to be in a really good neighborhood where it looks like values are going up. And when values are set, of course, we're looking at the neighborhood and comparing. This next house went up about eight point eight percent in that, in value, and it translates to about a seven percent increase in taxes. And the last house went up about ten percent in value and the taxes would go up about eight point five percent. Oh, I guess there is one more house here. This is the highest value house that we track. And again, that pretty much tracks. You know, the higher value houses are the ones that there's not as much demand for. So that value actually went up only about two percent. So the taxes go down on that one a little bit. So taxes, it's all proportional. I mean, it depends on where you are compared to everybody else. So if everybody else is going up a lot and you go up a little, your taxes are probably even going down. Whereas if your taxes go up, if your value's going up a lot compared to everybody else's going up a little, your taxes are probably really going to go up. So it's just kind of where you lie compared to the whole. It's a little bit hard to explain, but that's basically how it works.
One thing I just want to throw in on that, we didn't invent that. That's the statewide policy that every city uses the exact same formula and we just follow it.
Right. For valuing properties, we're required by law to stay within a ratio. So if we don't maintain that ratio, the state could come along and they could mass increase or mass decrease everybody's values. So you, we have to stay within a ratio of the selling price. And we look at the neighbors in that neighborhood, house sales in that study period, and that's what we're benchmarking our houses to, so. Okay, commercial properties. Now, the city council knows that we've had a number of tax appeals. Commercial values have not gone up nearly as much as residential properties. Thus, what's happening is, commercial taxes are not seeing the increases, but because we did increase our levy, somebody's going to pay it. So now it's the residential's. So the taxes have sort of switched from commercial to residential. This happened last year and it's still happening because the commercial values are not going up as fast as the residential. So you'll see that here, how that works. So this property, a smaller property, went up four point six percent and the taxes actually went down on this one. And commercial properties are impacted by the fiscal disparities ratio. And that gets very confusing, but part of their value goes to the fiscal disparity pot. And the part that doesn't go to the pot is what we capture. So earlier I said we get some back from fiscal disparities. So our commercial industrial properties are contributing to the pot. The pot is distributed and we get some back, if you could follow that. Okay, so there's the second commercial. That one up in value about two percent. Their taxes actually are going down a little bit. And then there's another commercial, went up about three point four percent. And if you remember, those residential's, they were more like eight or nine percent. And the taxes are going up about point four percent. So that is the end of my presentation. So what we need now is just open the public hearing and then I would recommend adopting the resolutions. There was a little bit of a change. I'm sure you saw it in the memo about the Gulf capital equipment. If there's any questions on that, we can talk about that as well.
Counsel, any questions of Ms. Legge before we open up the public hearing?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So just so everybody knows, Ms. Legge is retiring. So this is an end of an era of these presentations. And I, because she always runs the numbers, I thought I'd just run a couple of numbers real quick. Coon Rapids Incorporated as a city in nineteen fifty-nine, which means it's been a city for fifty-nine years. And Ms. Legge has been here for twenty-four of them, meaning forty percent, forty percent of the time it's been a city. So thanks again for all these presentations and for doing your best to make it as clear as possible.
I will tell you that.
All right, but it's not our last meeting. It's just our last truth and taxation.
Truth and taxation's like her superpower.
Did she have nachos over there?
Okay, well, with that, then we will open up the public hearing on the, let me get the exact words here. So we'll open up the truth and taxation public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel for the truth and taxation public hearing? No? All right. Yes?
I don't know exactly how this works. I apologize.
Okay, well, if it's something to do with the truth and taxation hearing, then you come up to the mic and.
It has to do with this.
Okay.
I was not here, or at least don't remember seeing any kind of.
Notice of an increase in our taxes this spring. When I did get this recently in the mail, it certainly got my attention because I've lived in Coon Rapids as a resident here, as a renter in 2011, bought that same property in 2012, and I still reside there today. My taxes have been consistently, every year, about the same amount. It's doubled. Now, I know the city gets their portion and I don't have an issue paying fair taxes, but I live in a town home where I don't even have a yard that I can call my own. So I don't know if anybody here can tell me, am I taxed at the same rate as a regular homeowner with a full yard that can plant whatever they want, wherever they want, within their yard, within a legal means?
So, yeah, so your values are based on market values of the other townhomes?
That's what they say, but I can tell you, it's not, it's not with what they have on here, it's not. I'll be talking to somebody in the assessor's office about that tomorrow because there is no way I will ever get anything close to this. So they're grossly overstated to get the taxes that they need. Again, I don't mind paying my fair share in taxes, but it needs to be fair. And the fact that I'm getting whammied from the city and then a double whammy from the county, which I will be going to that meeting as well to find out. And I'm sorry, I don't understand a lot, most of what you were saying, where all this tax monies is going to. But I need to understand my little corner of it.
So ma'am, what you have an issue with really is the valuation of your property. And because, and that's going to impact how you're charged at the county as well. So I would actually start by meeting with our assessor and make sure that he agrees, you know, make sure that you get his understanding of the value.
Okay. Well, can I ask somebody this? Am I taxed at the same rate as a normal homeowner would be when I just own studs in? Do you know what I'm saying or asking?
So it's not a rate issue. You're taxed with the same methodology. So whereas they look at market value for all of the properties in Coon Rapids, there is an estimated market value that relates to your property. So they're using the same valuation methodology for your property, but it won't be the same rate because you will have a different value than somebody else. Does that make sense?
In your value, it should be based on the other townhomes near you. You know, not, they're not going to compare it to single family homes. It'll be based on the other townhomes. And if there aren't townhomes that have sold at the value you're being assessed at, then you really do have some, something to have a conversation with our assessor about.
I think we do because there's rental property right across the street in the same area, which I think should come into this too. Thank you for addressing it.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Brody?
We just need a name and an address.
Yeah, yeah, ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. I should have had you start with, could I get your name and address, please, so they've got it for the record?
Yes, it's Linda Patterson. And my address is one oh nine six five Bluebird Street, northwest.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. All right. Anybody else here to address the counsel for truth and taxation hearing? If not, then I'll close that public hearing and reserve comments to the counsel. Or motions.
Your honor.
Counsel member Kicker.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution eighteen dash one one nine, adopting the 2019 budget. And also that we approve resolution eighteen dash one one eight, adopting the 2019 tax levy. Is that okay that we did it together?
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Counsel member Demmer?
Just a reminder to anyone, this is, the budget and the levy, the assessments are a totally different thing. And so if there's any concern with valuation such as was just expressed, that if your valuation comes down, your taxes come down regardless of what we do today. And the county has assessors and the city has assessors, but they have to get to the same value. And nobody tries to bring your number up to try to increase the city. Usually, the assessed value is actually lower than what you could sell a house for. And so if it's higher than what you think you could sell your house for, you definitely want to have a talk with the assessors.
Yep, very good. Mr. Stemwettle.
Mayor counsel, I'd also just like to thank Sharon Legge and the entire finance department, as well as the management team for the hours and hours that were put into the budget process and putting the document together. And we met for a long time, met with the council back in August. So this really is a long process. And for those folks who are watching this from the public realm, I do encourage you to check out the budget and brief document. It's available on our city website. Or if you come to city hall, we could print one off for you. It's kind of a simplified version of the budget. Try to make it very bright and graphical, just to kind of give a high level overview of what's going on. And then if you're so inclined, you can pull out the three hundred page document and really dig into the numbers, but at least give you a sense of the high level information, so.
One with pictures and graphs and then one's with just lots and lots of numbers.
Yep.
Mr. Ray?
Geisler?
Yeah, I would want to echo some of that. The staff works really hard because I know we as a council push them. It's not, hey, let's go get everything. It's very much focused on what are those things that we need to do to maintain the quality of services in our city? What are those things that we can maybe do differently? What are the things that we can go and expand or do something potentially new that's going to add more value for the same level of resources that we have? So we push staff and they do a good job, you know, working months and months and months to come up with. These are the things that we need to be able to deliver and have the quality within our city. And so I do appreciate all of the time and effort put forth and listening to us kind of go, where, can we do this or why would we do that? And answering all of our questions along the way.
Your honor.
If I might just dovetail off of that. So the meeting tonight began with an example of why it's important to have quality services and those things that we pay for really do contribute not only to the health and the safety and the welfare of our citizens, but also to the, just the overall quality of life here, which I think is really superb. And so the budget is reflective of the values of the city and the city council and the city staff, that we want to be that kind of community that looks after its neighbors and does a good job for the members of the community. And so that is reflected in this budget and I'm happy to support it.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And the budget and the tax levy are both adopted for 2019. Thank you for all of your work on that. And we are up to, wait a minute, twelve, thirteen. Consider approval of an animal impound agreement and fees to the Animal Humane Society. Chief Wise, you want to hit the crypt notes on this?
Yes, sir. That would be me. Yes, you're being asked to approve an agreement with the Animal Humane Society located here in Coon Rapids. A little historical background is probably helpful. Through early 2018, impound services were provided by Hillcrest Animal Hospital under contract, located out kind of in White Bear Lake, Maplewood border area. Per our contract with them, they gave us sixty days notice that they were ceasing to provide police impound services and compelled us to go find another entity to provide that contract service. So back in March, we solicited bids. Actually, we actively solicited the Animal Humane Society at that time because prior to Hillcrest, they had provided that service to our city, which had been a successful relationship back then. We solicited Maple Grove, they call it PUPS program, and another local entity Dover Kennel. And at that time, we received one bid and only one bid from Dover Kennel and they provided animal impound services since March. We had then subsequently been contacted by the, well, in fact, when we spoke to the Animal Humane Society back earlier this year, they had actually expressed an interest in getting back in the business for providing impound services. When they reached out to us and let us know that they were back in the service then. then, we, um, provided notice to Dover that we were terminating the contract with them, and then reopening a new bid process to provide contract services. And the Animal Humane Society of Coon Rapids then, is the entity that we selected, and, and I think it's important for people to understand, primarily, the reason is convenience, why they were chosen as our, um, as a potential contractor. Uh, being located in Coon, in Coon Rapids is extremely convenient for animal control officers, uh, for the sake of timeliness in dropping an animal off, securing them in a cage, and clearing the scene. Um, and secondarily, is when people need to reclaim their animals, they'll be able to reclaim their animal here in Coon Rapids and won't have to leave the city. To accomplish that, and, um, and so frankly, it was mostly on that basis that, that we believe there'd be a, a preferred contractor for the service.
Do you have any questions of it? Counsel member Demmer?
Um, move to approve the 2019 agreement and associated fees for animal impound services with the Animal Humane Society in the attached contract.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Onto item 14, um, most of which we've already had explained to us. Consider approval of the purchase of police and fire radios. And we're looking at an amount of $613,410 net of the trade-in allowance, um, with, and it'll be financed through an internal loan. Um, I don't know, anybody need a presentation on this? It's, it sounds like we have really old radios, and we really need to talk to everybody, and...
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Geisler?
I'll make a motion, um, to purchase the radios for police-fire in the amount of $613,410, net the trade-in allowance, and to, um, approve an internal loan, be repaid over five years in the amount of $613,410.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Is there discussion? Counsel member Demmer?
Um, the trade-in allowances of $70,025, um, is, is that trading back into Motorola 'cause they wanna move us up, or are we selling them to kids to play walkie-talkie?
Yeah, counsel member Demmer, Mr. Mayor, hey, um, frankly Motorola doesn't want a secondary market for their old radios. They were good radios, they were solid, um, it was planned obsolescence on the part of Motorola, and so we were needing to buy new ones, but, um, they're good equipment, they don't want a secondary market, so they give us this trade-in value, and we take advantage of it.
Okay. Makes sense. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And we are up to open-mic public comment. Is anybody here to address counsel for open-mic this evening? Yes, ma'am. If you could come up to the microphone, and, uh, up to the podium, state your name and address. Open-mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. You're already at the mic, so if you would provide your name and address, and then you've got three minutes.
My name is Laurel Ferulick. I live at 11740 Zeon Boulevard Northwest, Apartment 203, Coon Rapids, Minnesota, 55448. I'm here to speak about second-hand smoke protections ordinance, which I heard about on, on a news program, I think it was Channel 4, recently, that's already adopted in Contra Costa, California County. I mean, it's a county, Contra Costa, county. I just wanna share a little bit of why I'm here. Imagine it's 2:30 a.m., and you, you start to wheeze from smoke. You get up, you run to the window, you throw open the window, I throw open the sash too, but that's another story. But I try to get a breath, and then I frantically try to make my bed so that the smoke doesn't settle on it and make the allergens worse than it is. Okay, I grab my pillows, run out into the living room, open up the window in the living room, turn on the fan in the bedroom so that the air will get clean. It's so strong, you can taste it, and you can, you know, it's... Not only smoke, but lately in our building, this is a multi-family apartment building, I'm sorry, I didn't say that earlier, I just knew I was gonna do this at 1:15 today. You could, anyway... I end up sleeping in the living room, instead of in my bedroom, for the rest of the night. This is my experience with second-hand smoke. It's worse now because some of the smoke coming up is pot smoke. I've talked to my management about it, and today I talked to them again, they said to call the police if it's pot. But the problem is, they have to catch them with the substance before they can do anything about it, and if they do it on, um, you know, they just, that's what the problem is with the police, going in, in there and talking to them. They have to have proof. Well, the ordinance for Contra Costa County in California is starting July 1st, 2019. I just wondered if we could adopt a policy or a ordinance here. You can look over the information I, um, copied off the website. If you wanna go to the website, it's cchhealth.org, and it's called second-hand smoke protection My grandson is also living in an apartment building in Coon Rapids. His bedroom is above the smokers too, and both of us live in buildings that are non-smoking He's been doctoring with respiratory problems for several weeks now. He took a vacation, came back home, and it started up again. He's 14 years old, he's into sports, and some of this is taking a toll. I just want, oh, I know that children in my, our building are experiencing respiratory issues also. I just think we should take care of the children we've got.
Ms. Ferulick, maybe you could leave that information with our city clerk, and then she can scan it and distribute it to us?
Can I just have two more sentences?
Okay.
Minnesota's the North Star State, let us shine for something good. And help us sleep in heavenly peace.
So your, your, your buildings are supposed to be non-smoking buildings? Is that what you said?
Yep.
Oh.
This is a cop, yeah, but I would've made one for you.
Oh, would you give that to her right there, Ms. Lenz, mayor?
I would, I brought one, I wanna, I think, would you really?
She will.
That's...
This one? I will make sure. Thank you.
I have to remake this, but, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much, thank you. Is there anybody else here to address counsel for open-mic this evening? All right, then we will close the open-mic portion, and we don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. Awfully quiet, is there like no events going on that we should, uh, December? Plowing? Mr. Stemwettle?
Mayor Council just mentioned, since, uh, we don't have a meeting until after this date, but we do have our annual skate with Santa on December 16th at the Coon Rapids Ice Center, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Uh, there is a cost for entrance, $5 for adults, $4 for students, and 5 and under are free with a paid adult.
Very good. Mr. Hammer, how did our first, uh, plowing experience go? Actually, we've probably had two, two experiences, haven't we?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, several weeks ago, there was just the dusting, which was more of an ice issue, um, and so we learned a little bit from that, we're gonna be a little more, um, aggressive with some of our chemicals, try something a little bit different, sheer. And the one over the weekend, we got ahead of it, and spent some time early on Friday, and followed up again on, on Saturday and Sunday, and it was nice without school, being in session for Monday, which allowed us some extra time to clear some of those sidewalks, and didn't have to go through the overtime process to make that happen.
Yeah. You know, and it's like, folks, just learn a little patience, you know, we live in Minnesota, we live where it snows, you know, just drive accordingly. Yeah. All right. Any other business for counsel here? Wow.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.